I'd like to call this public hearing to order. I'm going to cover two things on the process of why we're here for the public hearing, and then the process for those that want to speak during this public hearing. We're here to consider amending Chapter 105-10, GE3Q. 105-10 is the Ag Residential District. G is the special exceptions, and Q is youth-oriented recreational facility owned and operated by nonprofit organizations or governmental entities. At our December 16, 2004 Planning Commission meeting, the Boosters presented their special exceptions, and the commission sent a motion to the Town Board to consider exploring language and amendments to the ordinance to go forward with this proposal, which passed four to one. At our January 7, 2025 Town Board meeting, the Board made a motion that the Town work on amending ordinance 105-10. That motion carried five zero. The language in this ordinance change was brought about by our engineering firm, attorney, and zoning administrator after the application from the Hudson Boosters. The Planning Commission had this ordinance amendment on their agenda on January 20, 2025. The Planning Commission made changes to the wording of the ordinance at that meeting. And that ordinance was passed by unanimous vote of the members present, which included Ryan Work, Adam Bast, Sarah Wayne, Becky Milbraith, Tony DeBruzy, and Greg White. The ordinance for the public hearing tonight is the ordinance forwarded to the Town Board by the Planning Commission by their unanimous voting. Everyone here... Everyone here should be aware that the properties along Highway 12 are going to be commercially zoned, and according to our town plan, commercially zoning will allow gas stations, brick block stores, restaurants, shopping centers, et cetera, as permitted uses. The property currently is ag-residentially zoned at this time and will require a special exception permit that will allow the Town Board to put restrictions and requirements on the property that the Boosters so want to move forward. There is no request at this time from anyone for a new zoning district or for rezoning. This process that we're going through tonight conforms to our ordinances. Now I'm going to go over the process of speaking. Anyone wishing to speak should have signed in in the back of the room, and you'll hear why that is. Anyone who wishes to speak to this matter is a resident, renter, or landowner of the Town of Hudson must come to the table up here where the two mics are and present their name and address and whether they're a resident, renter, or landowner of the Town of Hudson, and that they've signed in. Everyone will be allowed to speak on this matter for one time for two minutes each. If there is any non-residents who wish to speak, they may also come in and talk after the residents and the Town of Hudson renters and all landowners of the city. They must also have signed in. They will be allowed to speak on this matter each for two minutes. The timer will start when you have stated your name and address three or two minutes to speak. If time remains after the persons have all been willing to talk, an opportunity to ask a second question may be allowed for one minute each. At no time will any person be allowed to speak a second time before anyone has had a chance to speak once. In the interest of saving time, please form two lines at the table so that we can move from one person to the next and try to make us two minutes. Time's everybody in here adds up to a whole lot if everybody wants to speak. At no time, and this is for the Board, will the Board answer, interact, or discuss any comments during this public hearing. If no one wishes to speak, this is just so you understand the process when I get to the end. I will ask if anybody else wants to speak, and I will do that twice, and then call for a close of the public hearing. I'm ready to have speakers come forward from the Town of Hudson residents that wish to speak.
My name is Ryan Carey. I'm a Town of Troy resident. I'm here to be at the Hudson Booster Board. I've been asked by our Board to open up the public comment section of the meeting and focus on...
Town of Troy? I ask them to give a speech so that we all understand why they're here.
I'm just here to give an introduction. I've been asked by our Board to open up the public comment section this meeting, focusing on why we're here. Our organization has come to the Town of Hudson with what I see as a simple request. Please implore our organization with the opportunity to make a considerable investment in this township so we can further serve our over 500 kids that participate in our programs. As your ordinances are written, there's no single piece of land in the entire township that can be used for the purpose we seek. The township ordinance is allowing things like warehouses, truck stops, convenience stores, auto repair shops, things we certainly need, but those uses are no more important than uses which support our kids. The commercial uses that are allowed in the current ordinances oftentimes create 24/7 light noise, whereas our proposed use on the admission ordinance will have minimal impact on neighbors in our busy season and no impact on them when it's dark. Some may come before you this evening complaining about our project's light, sound, and traffic, but I would ask, how is it they are okay with disruptions if those sources are from 18 dealers and cars going to and from commercial enterprise, but not okay if it's from parents and grandparents going to watch kids play T-ball? Others that oppose our project may argue that they simply want our property to remain important. To those folks, the meeting they should have attended was on December 5, 2023, when this group of individuals, this Board, decided after a notice and ten meetings to adopt a comprehensive plan which earmarked our property and those around it for commercial purposes. That was your time to object to a commercial type use going on our property. Now I'll close with this. When I think about the decision in terms of whether this particular ordinance should be amended, one simple question comes to mind. What kind of community do we want to live in? Do we want to live in one that supports our youth and welcomes investments of this kind into our community? I sure do, and hope you do as well. Please support this and amend the ordinance as requested. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Mullin. I live at 617 Green Road. I am the owner of my home. I am here to oppose this amendment. I am also the closest neighbor to the Hudson Town Hall. The outfield fence of Catterfield is 65 yards away from my house. I have lived at 1617 Green Road for 28 years and have never complained, even though I can hear the coaches, players, parents screaming, clapping, et cetera. From the time I get home from work until it gets dark outside. The current amendment is about lights in summer, so for the first time in 28 years, I am here to complain. The ballgames are played until dark now, which can be as late as 9:00 p.m. 9:00 p.m., is that not late enough? The language "youth-oriented" has been scratched from the original ordinance. And I see there is no mention of alcohol in the amendment, which tells me that the door is open for adult softball and a winter license. This is unacceptable, and I am very concerned with what these changes could do to my property value. As a Town of Hudson voter, I urge you not to pass this. Thank you for your time.
I'm absolutely a citizen of North Carolina. I'm an owner and live there for 40 years. Bought this thing for about 15 years. One of the rights of ownership of property is quiet enjoyment. Loudspeaker, lights, and other things do not allow you to have quiet enjoyment of your property. It's a violation of what we're afforded. Putting lights out there, having beer out there, having traffic out there, this isn't for just kids playing T-ball. We all know it. This is a way to stretch it and to continue it further. And quite frankly, once you put lights there, the soccer field's going to get lights, and they're going to have loudspeakers. You have to, once you do something for one, you have to do it for the other. So this isn't just one piece of property. This is a destruction of rural enjoyment of our property now. There's no need for it. Find some other place that's better suited for something like this. Maybe along the Hudson Center, maybe we should have done it 15 years ago, when we already said no.
Hi, my name is Robert Fowler. I live at 745 Nicholas Drive at Hudson Township. I'm asking the Board to vote down this proposal's resolution, not because I'm against the ball field, okay? I want the Boosters to hear this too, but the way you're going about it now with this special exception... Okay, so with ordinances, when you're drafting these, you have to be very precise, and if you use broad language, you're going to have far more intended consequences. So I kind of use this analogy, I'll try to keep this not so legalese, but like if you are tasked with painting Portugal somewhere, you use a brush like this, an artist's brush, right? Not a three-inch painting brush, and that's what you're agreeing with this ordinance, is you're using the wrong tool. So I have a solution for you that will benefit the Boosters just as well, but also cut out all the objections that you're going to hear, just like the last gentleman, for the soccer field or the ball fields here at the Town. So if you have the power to do this, you have the power with vacant land or create a new zoning district. We only have one proposal in front of you, it's from the Boosters. Why not create, call it a youth nonprofit activities district? And you make this property owned by the Boosters, that district. And then you take that district and you say all Ag Res activities are allowed, so they lose nothing if they wanted to sell or not go forward. But then you add as a possibility, if they present to you a dark sky compliant, sound mitigated plan, that would be a requirement if you do the special exception. So again, I know from talking to the residents here, there's substantial opposition from the soccer field, because they bargained for that whenever that was put into place, and their property's definitely going to be impacted by an expansion of that. So why are we using this brush with your ordinance proposal versus this one? So again, if you take your pretty map of your zoning and you make a new district just the Booster's property, you'll accomplish a lot and have no opposition.
My name is Dan Drexler. I'm at 749 Wilford Road in Hudson, just south of where the proposed site is. I'm not really here for or against. I have some questions that I can't find answers to. The Hudson Boosters is a 501(c) nonprofit, fine, there's lots of them. But we're taking taxes off the rolls. I assume the Hudson Boosters, I don't know whether they pay taxes on that property or not. So we're taking taxes off the rolls, even agricultural taxes off the rolls for a special area, okay? That means the rest of us pay for it. Are we going to serve alcohol? Is there going to be adult weekend tournaments? You know, you guys are talking about this, and we don't have answers to a lot of these questions, so I don't know whether I'm for or against it. I'm for what the Boosters do, but if this expands to adult weekend tournaments, if it expands to selling alcohol, then we go into another whole area of things, and I don't see anything written anywhere about that. Third question, the traffic control on 12. Are you going to put it around hogs? Are you going to light it? If you put roundabout in, fine, who's going to pay for it? Boosters aren't going to pay for that, so who's going to pay for that roundabout? And I know you want to vote on something, but I don't see some of the answers that I need. Of those costs, then who's going to pay for it? Because as a Town of Hudson resident since 1998, we pay taxes, I pay taxes, and I want some of these answers before we really move forward on some of this stuff. Thank you.
Eric, we live at 783 Larson Lane, just next to the soccer fields. We don't want the Boosters to change this ordinance to affect all recreational facilities. It's not acceptable. Removing the youth oriented, as the gentleman said earlier, it's in conflict with what the Boosters website states as their main vision and mission and purpose. They all state that everything is for the Hudson youth sports, but we're taking that out in the very first line of this proposal. Why are they trying to change the township ordinances to refer to these things? It's probably for profit events, adult league, special venues, like everybody else has said. It's deceptive, we feel, to the public, because what they represent is totally something different than what they're trying to revise in this township ordinance. We're not in agreement for the no sound control 24 hours a day, because that's what it looks like with all these red lines, including the township no longer having any authority for quiet hours between 9:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m., 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. We do not want amplified sound or lighting. It is already noisy, late afternoon, early evenings, and weekends due to sports. Where we live, we feel that this will significantly affect our property values, and we don't need any more light pollution out here in the country. Regarding the survey that was sent out online that I saw on your website, it was sent out to 4,300 people who have or have had youth in sports. That would be considered invalid in my mind because it didn't include everybody else in the township. I think we had 9,000 people with winter. And only 18 people were invited to the meeting about this. So how do we get in touch with everybody else? Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Jonathan Hartley. I'm in Hudson, a lot half. I'm against this because of light pollution, sound pollution, the traffic. We are a rural area, and that's why most people came up here. They have that climate, and I want to build it up. And for all your life, and also why are we letting people from outside of our town influence what happens and what we do with our land here? And they don't care because they don't have to live with it. We have to live with it, and all the Town Board need to look out for the county first and foremost, not the outsiders. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Kneef, and I live at 783 Larson Lane. And as I looked at this red line revision, the thing, I went to the Booster's site and read through the proposal, and I'm very confused because as the gentleman gave the introduction here, he said they represent youth-oriented sports. So I don't understand why that is redlined and then owned and operated by nonprofit organizations. So to me, that says now all of the recreational facility areas can have for-profit activities, and they also, as long as the Board approves them, they can have any venue that the Board approves, even they could have concerts, they could have just about anything. I don't want to see these areas turn into something that, as long as they get the Board approval, any venue is possible. And so the sound, I was concerned about the sound because the way that this is redlined, it says they're going to comply with the regular sound code, but if you go to the sound code, they're exempt from the sound code because they're a sports facility. So I'd say, when I looked at this, I'm just very confused at why we're trying to change all these things, and that is not what the Boosters represent in any mission. I read specifically their mission, their vision, their purpose, and their current proposal, and each one of those says the same thing, it's only for youth. So I'm totally confused by what is redlined here, so thank you for your time. I'm sorry, did you repeat your name again, please?
Matt Borvo. I think the biggest things that kind of strike me with this is I have kids in most parts. I have kids in soccer, I have kids in boosters, we've funded all, we've banned all these facilities, and see kind of how these some of these things go. I guess my worry is, as written, that last summer predates 10:45 p.m. we can have these games going, so that means our entire summer soundtrack in our backyards is that. It's not quiet, it's not having equipment, it's hearing all the baseball movement, hollering, and other noises that come out. And I think just, I'm not against the facility, I think it's not a bad idea, but I think having 10:45 every single night at least is a little much, especially with the traffic, the noise, the people being everywhere. And then it just, I have little kids, I just want to make sure they're at the little bathrooms in the afternoon, if it's going to be loud and loud sound and all these other things, until anytime now that I see that they took away the 9:00 to 7:00, kind of quiet. I think that's a big issue. That's something that's going to put a lot on these homeowners' lidge on their own. Neighborhoods have been in their backyards where they want to be after the summer nights, and it's not going to make it quite as nice here in all this stuff until we finally have a res. I think that's a complete part. The other thing I haven't heard much about is the parking, and how this is going to be enough parking for all these things. I'm sure they're willing to run tournaments, and I've been to all these tournaments, and you can look at the soccer fields, look at the overflow that happens. They have huge areas dedicated for parking. They put tournaments here, where are they going to park? On the highway? Roads leading up to it? There are people in every neighborhood nearby in the park. Drive or act on it. Just more on these tournaments, folks. And I haven't heard any kind of things from the researchers whatsoever about the game and the slots around it.
My name's Jim Dennison at 608 Green Road. So essentially, ball fields are right behind the house, it's right across the street from me. And oftentimes on a summer evening, I enjoy the sound that I hear, kids over there playing ball, so with my Booster friends, I don't think that's a bad idea. What I do agree with is that this impassioned plea that was started before your constituents, a man from Troy Township was up there saying the case before we were allowed to speak, I think that was backwards, and I kind of resent the situation that I got out of it, is that we were taking something away from someone. In fact, we're not taking anything away from anyone. Someone's asking to take something away from us, and that's our quiet in our little neighborhood here. And I would say, what more can you do to this community right now? What we've just gone through with the construction this summer, we guess had to be done, but now it makes me wonder if that's why the roundabout was put in. We don't need noise past dark out here. We have it already. A lot of stuff goes on in this parking lot during the summer hours, after dark, nobody does anything about, we put up with a lot of fireworks shoot up over here. That's going to go on and on and on and on. And I think it's very telling that the last item on this amendment, the last item, is the consideration for the people who live here, and I think that says a lot about the process, because this looks like a done deal already. I'm kind of confused. Maybe I should be more involved, even if I live right here. This is the first I heard about it, it was something dropped in my mailbox here a week or so ago, and it seems like this is kind of written that it's a done deal already, and I ask, what impact statement has been done in this community outside of even this proposed change for our community? What impact was done? What are the noises like out here now with the roundabouts in? Instead of through traffic, we hear jake breaking all day long, at night, early in the morning. Every truck is much louder as they break into the roundabout and as they take off. What more? We put the cell tower right in our backyard, too. What more does this community have to put up with? We're not taking it any way from anybody, and it's county land, but I think it's over for the public as it is. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Joe Burrow. I live in 38 Kelly Road in Hudson Township. I've been there since 1991, and I will repeat a lot of the things that have been said prior because that's really where I'm at, a lot of questions. And because of this incongruency with what has been said from the Hudson Boosters and revisions, it doesn't match. So what we have, what I have, is a lot of unsettled, uncomfortable feelings, which is to say, it is apparent that you all here, or are moving forward with putting this thing in, and the questions that I would ask for you to consider is the sound and lighting. And the lighting in particular, just because there is nothing from or nothing set. You're not specific to really anything on this revision. It's very free-flowing, kind of as if you are going to wait to see what they need to have this go through. But I had to look up what it means to have a dark sky certification, and the dark sky being approved, and I would say I would love it if that was, again, something you're moving forward to do, I would actually request that they must be certified, because that limits the class of recreational play. It actually mandates that there are levels based on what kind of ball field is going to have happen. So there's Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3, and this all has to do with the type of lighting, and so that would be something I would ask the Town Board if you can move forward, is that you actually make that something that's possible. And again, with it being so unclear, there's so many questions, and the ones informing have cited them, I guess what I would ask is that you would consider us. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike McDonald, 877 Union Drive in Township. I am also the Vice President of the Hudson Soccer Association, so I'm here in support of this. I support the Boosters. They're along with us in the basketball association, and they do our best to make up for that, because there isn't a rec department in Hudson of any sort running the township, so we're in charge of basically maximizing what we can do to benefit the youth of the area, give them outdoor spaces to play, get them on competitive teams, recreational teams, that type stuff, to get all the benefits that they can out of physical activity, team sports, that type stuff, as well as bringing, you know, people from the cities here or other communities to spend money in this town or at the gas stations and that type stuff to also try to benefit the communities more than we can. So again, I'm here to support the Boosters in their trying to change this rule, so thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Nia Lippo. I live at 745 Nicholas Drive, and I wrote something down so I could make sure it's not my thoughts, but I honestly don't know if I'm for or against the ball field. However, I'm wondering why, after more than a decade, we all of a sudden need to get this done in lightning speed? Why is there already a draft of the new ordinance before the workshops even happened? There are many people in this community that this will affect. It is in the best interest of all involved, including the Boosters, to slow down and let the community know what's going on out in the open, not behind closed doors. Clearly, there's questions that need to be answered. As a resident of this township, I have the right to interact with my elected officials and participate in my local government. On February 5 of this year, Tim Foster signed in these new rules. Rule number four, public comment. The public comment section of an agenda can be tabled at any time during the meeting, along with some other rules that he states. Rule number 15, audience members must address the chair. Any person intended wishing to speak shall have received a letter or shall represent a matter before the Ward, shall address the chair of the meeting, and limit remarks to agenda items being addressed. Remarks shall not be made regarding personal texts or any individual. Remarks shall not be made regarding personal texts or any individual. And then finally, rule number twenty-nine, regarding Facebook and other social media sites. No town Facebook or other social media sites shall be created without town board approval, no town board members, et cetera, et cetera. All interactions should take place at properly known spaces. And you already said you weren't going to talk to us. So, how are we supposed to get this information? Why, Mr. Foster, are you the gatekeeper of information? Why are we not allowed to have a conversation to know what's going on? I think this needs to slow down. And my dad will say things like, you know, some things are wrong and some things are right. And I think this is wrong, that you're not allowing people to understand what's going on. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Hoppin, nine zero four Daily Row with the Town of Hudson. I've been the same thing with all this stuff all year. I just want to express my opposition to this proposed change. I believe the current ordinance is sufficient and does not need modification. This small town does not need a complex of this magnitude, which includes eighty-foot tall lights and amplified sound systems. The boosters should be required to comply with the existing ordinance or just move on. With a population of approximately eighty-eight hundred residents, only two hundred and twenty-seven participated in the online survey, and there's been no clarification on how many supported or opposed this. I understand how booster's property is owned, the town would benefit far more from a business in that location that would generate revenue. These fields might bring in some revenue for the city of Hudson, but the town will see very little benefit. If the boosters are indeed focused on youth, why is there a push from the town to remove the word youth from the ordinance? It is also important to note that the majority of those advocating for this change are from the city of Hudson. Please remember that you as board members work for all of us who are residents in this town. I urge you to do the right thing and reject this ordinance change. Please consider the impact that this change will have on all the residents in this town and the long-term consequences that this will have. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Greg White. I live at eight thirty-one Kellie Road in the Town of Hudson, with a cherished rural character. I wish to thank the boosters for bringing this proposal to our town. It has provided me another opportunity to observe how our town leadership chooses to act when presented with such nuances and significance. Suffice to say, I am truly disappointed.
Hello, my name is Steve Hermsen. I'm here tonight to submit a hundred and two signatures I have.
Can I get your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Eight thirteen Harvardview Road.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here to submit the signatures to a hundred and two people that assigned their names opposing one of these changes to put in town ordinance one oh five dash ten. Why are we here again tonight to talk about this and protect our peace and quiet? The boosters had made their request thirteen years ago to put lights and sound in this proposed five hundred twelve location, but then withdrew it due to the amount of opposition. The town board then gave the boosters a special exception permit to build ball fields at that location with listed restrictions that would comply with our town ordinance for an Ag Res district. So, what happened after thirteen years? The boosters did nothing. And what have the town residents learned in fifteen years living next to a sports field? They've learned they don't like it at all. The noise and traffic is extremely annoying, as homeowners living next to Grand View Park and the soccer fields. Those living next to the soccer fields are terrified of the possible extended activities now with lights, Saturday nighttime games in their backyards. The boosters are hinging their basis for this ordinance change on the one statement in the twenty forty comprehensive plan. And now the planning commission and the town board take the position that all other criteria in that comprehensive plan are lower importance. It's amazing to me how the very next lines of the ordinance in the Ag Res district, when you read them, says homeowners are allowed, are not allowed to keep more than twelve chickens. It all goes, it goes into detail, listing all the restrictions on how chickens are to be kept. And you better not have a booster, that forbid that in a crowing in an Ag Res district. Yet, let the boosters show you a pretty picture of the ball field, and at the drop of the hat, you're ready to throw the taxpaying homeowners under the bus and revise the ordinance to fit the boosters' request and tell the surrounding homeowners when they put up with the noise like this. So, thank you, board members, for your efforts, not only to make it harder for us to do breakfast, but to get some sleep.
Tony Stanek, ten forty-five Canny Lane, been a resident of Hudson since nineteen seventy-eight. Seen a lot of growth, a lot of change, obviously. This amendment will allow us and the boosters to support our youth in I Men's Day Road.
You asked for the chair.
The alternative to this project is to convert the youth, that would have far greater impact on the community. We did not remove the youth component of this amendment, we support youth only and will continue to do so. Most of all, the objections are based on assumptions and can be dealt with in the special discussion. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
James White, six zero nine Grainger Road. I could want to call in about two minutes. I disagree with the lights and adults playing, if that's what's going on. And it's about money. I mean, I could put a baseball field in my house too, and I don't think it makes any sense just to people on money. So, people like youth sports is a little different than only about money. So, if it's just about making money, I think we all can put something in our house that will make money. Thanks.
Chris Jordan, five forty-six County Road, UU. I think as we look at, obviously, it's been redlined and has been obliterated as we look at our current zoning. I think that what you guys have been very noble, bringing youth and engaging youth with sport. But we, the residents that live here, need to have some more things that are going to be going on with in terms of, we don't have any significant opposition for property owners. So, if there's anyone opposed to vague changes, we cannot have any recourse. And for the town's sake, it looks to me like when you guys make this decision, there's not going to be any additional scheduled events provided for the town for yearly review. You know, as you change the things to youth oriented and now sort of adults, I want to remind everybody, which we should have a map up at full time, that seventy percent of this Ag Res is the Town of Hudson. As we look through what is going to be considered frontage for federal, county, and state highways, there's a lot of area that make up the Ag Res. So, as you look at how you're changing your ordinance, it's going to take some time to build that wonderful facility. But your decision is going to be final tonight, or whenever you make that vote. So, as they build, take the time to change, move the earth, and build their facility, we are going, the town are going to be dealing with your actions right away. So, as you go into working session, I would like you to consider what's going to be good for you guys as a town, for heading down the road, and think for what's going to be the good for all parties, not just for a single use property. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Smith. I live at twelve thirty-seven Tenth Street North, Hudson. I'm a mom of seven, six of which are boys. We live here since twenty, sorry, what?
I don't know. Have all the residents that want to speak?
No, sorry.
The township gets a ton first.
Oh, sorry. That's fine. Yeah.
Is there any other residents that still need to talk?
Hi, I'm Barbara Reyes, under that five five thirty two Drive. I lived there since nineteen ninety-five, adjacent to the soccer fields, were very much opposed to this ordinance change. When that lane was originally donated for the soccer fields, it was stated clearly then that lights would never go on on my property, and they had to support the community then because of that restriction. Changing that now, most of those homes have not changed yet, it's still the same people who didn't oppose the same civil resolution back in thirteen years ago. There seems to be some kind of hidden agenda here. Youth sports don't need to go beyond nine thirty, ten o'clock at night when the sun goes down. It's the hidden agenda for something beyond youth sports and an ordinance change like this. I believe the Town of Hudson should not change the ordinance.
Hi, I'm Randy Yelts. I live at seven six three Olive Road in Hudson. I've been living here since nineteen ninety-eight. I live close to the soccer fields, but I also have a deal with the lights from the truck stop. You know, I'm concerned about, I am not in favor of the ordinance change. And, you know, you're taking the youth oriented out of the, you know, and just having recreational facilities. That means anybody could be there, you know, playing, and, you know, nobody needs to have all this noise till ten thirty at night. As a person who already, you know, we hear the soccer fields having hollering, and there's a tournament, and then all the traffic that goes with it, we also have the, you know, people parking in our neighborhood that shouldn't be parking in our neighborhood. Even though there's been signs and things like that that state they're not supposed to be there, you know, I'm just concerned about also, you know, the younger people, you know, if somebody else set up alcohol, possibly, you know, being able to be put, you know, in this facility. We also have, I just know from a standpoint of where I live, you know, the lights from the truck stop, yes, they're, these are going, these new lights are going to be way higher than the ones that are at the truck stop. I just know that lights reflect off the clouds, they reflect off the ground, depending upon the weather, you know, whether you're going to hear noise or anything like that. You know, some nights, the noise is really bad, depending upon the choice of the light source. So, I'm definitely not in favor of this ordinance change.
My name's Crystal Bremer. I am a Town of Hudson resident. I live at six forty-two Laurie Lane, just across the street, which I own and own a home. I have two booster sports, they're both in softball, and I recently become a travel softball coach, and I cannot tell you how much this program has changed, not just my life, but my kids' life, and just their activity in the community and being able to make new friends through this. Now, I know ordinance raises a lot of questions, but my question to everybody opposed to this, would you much rather have a twenty-four hour a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, quick trip that brings tons of traffic, has their lights on all year long, plus everything, all the other commercials on, and that it would open up to not just a quick trip, but stores with parking lots that have to be away for safety? Is that what you would rather want, instead of having something that our kids can actually play on and use? And it's not going to be used twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So, to me, it seems like it's kind of a brain explosion.
Hi, good evening. Andrew Nelson, eight thirty-three Moving Road West. I've had the opportunity to have all five of my kids at one point in other boosters, also involved in a lot of different activities. I have coached one way, shape, or form probably for the last twelve years or so, including coaching, staying in the past teams, and that type of thing. First of all, I want to say thank you for giving everybody the opportunity. Obviously, there's a lot of opinion on either side of this matter, which this is democracy in action, it's wonderful to see, really. But at the end of the day, I think that everybody should be on the same page in supporting any opportunity to expand or otherwise provide opportunities for kids and adults to get outside and do something positive. Get out in the recrey, get off the phones, get off from behind the TV screens, the computer screens, and get out there and do something positive with each other. Anything that supports one-on-one or team interactions, which is exactly what this does, that's great. The idea that it's youth for adults, who cares, to be honest with you. It's the idea that adults can't have fun, or adult leagues can't be formed, and using facilities is kind of silly. I think that you have the lights out here, there should be lights up at the soccer fields and expanding hours, and everybody the opportunity to have that. Anybody that's been to a baseball tournament, I've been to dozens of them, they're not loud events. You have a handful of people that are cheering on one team or the other, they're not noisy or anxious, all outrageous things going on there. It's just packed in there, and that's what it is. Lastly, a really good example of why this is needed, is simply lack of fields. There are a minimum of ten teams that are trying to use both diversity and the JV field right now. To add just one more, huge help to both the high school and the booster's program.
Good evening. Steve Ackerman, seven eight eight Barson Line, Hudson, Wisconsin. I'm in favor of an ordinance change to support the lighting and sound needs for the proposed booster sports complex. There have been a lot of concerns brought up about the noise and light pollution from the sports complex. This property will not be in a farm field, that much is clear. It will be developed in some manner, it's only a matter of time. Were there ordinances that will limit noise and light pollution from commercial development in that same spot? The booster's organization has worked diligently to minimize negative impacts from light noise. Lighting concerns have been addressed through state-of-the-art technology that focuses light on the field. Noise concerns have been addressed through a sound system that is focused on field supply. Unfortunately, traffic will probably increase, but it's going to increase from the properties developed regardless. Do you want more families traveling through this area, or more semis traveling to an Amazon distribution center? Generally speaking, the addition of facilities that support youth actually increases property values in surrounding areas. I actually bought my house specifically because it was supposed to be a sports complex. In most of working, this project is dear to the community. It will help kids get active, learn sportsmanship, and develop mental skills that will help these kids throughout their lives. In a community that is already at risk of dying due to lack of young families, this is an opportunity to support all our kids and help make Hudson a community that our kids will want to move back to and raise their own heads. Thank you for your time.
John Reeger, three eight seven Traveling. For the past seventeen years, I've lived in Town of Hudson. I'm here tonight to show my support to approve the amended current zoning rules to allow people to use the light and sound. For more than the last ten years, I've been part of Hudson Boosters, first as a coach, then now an active board member, as well as a baseball commissioner. Every year, I and eight others of our members, committee members, volunteer our time and try to put together a great baseball season for all of our athletes. Each year brings new challenges for us, we work through, and it's always a constant issue, year after year, the field space or the lack of. There isn't a weekday in the summer, as you look out here, and it's not totally packed, but there's a need for more. Approving this amendment is a critical aspect of the boosters who take the next steps to make the original field space for our community a reality. I appreciate your time tonight and look forward to seeing amendment passed, and we continue to get more ball players out and enjoy America's pastime.
Ken Stelzner, six ten Countryside Lane. I represent the football park of boosters, the Redhead Stepchild, as the smaller group of the boosters. The lights are absolutely necessary for us in baseball. You're right, it's light till nine o'clock. Guess how late it is in October? Five thirty, plain and dark. You've got to have lights for those kids to play. I grew up in Hudson. I've lived in Hudson Township for the last twenty-five years. I've been a Hudson resident my whole life. When I played football, we played where the post office is, on fields that are marked up as baseball fields, and we played tackle football on cinders. Not a super pleasant experience. Playing on turf, a type of facility that's bringing the pros here that this ordinance would support, is absolutely essential. Hudson was the last team school in the entire conference to get turf. It was embarrassing. Our fields are embarrassing. This is needed to up the level of Hudson. Hudson is a fluid community. Hudson is a growing community, it was a growing community, is now a dying community. We were talking about moving schools because we don't have enough kids. We need to turn this around, we need to support Hudson schools, we need to support youth in this community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Hoppin. I'm at five five two Drew Drive in the Town of Hudson Township. And my home sits directly adjacent to the southeast field at the soccer complex. During the summer, I cannot open my windows because I hear whistleblowing from seven AM in the morning till well after, depending on what month it is. Adding lights and sound is only going to exacerbate that. And one thing that I haven't heard from anybody here that doesn't apply And one thing I haven't heard from anybody here that doesn't oppose this is what's in it for the residents that have to deal with this on a constant daily basis. I work full-time. I come home. I cannot sit on my deck because of the constant cheering and whistle blowing, traffic, overflow. Parking is parked in my backyard pretty much. Cardboard slamming all weekend long and it's unacceptable. And I haven't heard anything once in it for us. Any noise attenuation, any light mitigation? Just suck it up and it's for the kids. Thank you.
My name is Mike Reyes. I live at five five three Drew Drive, Township of Hudson. We moved there in ninety-four. Throughout, I stay with the Hudson boosters. I coached for a numerous amount of years with all my kids. I was very involved with the sports. I'm all about the Hudson boosters and the Hudson boosters having a field to play on. What I'm opposed to is the lights and the effects of the amplified sound system. If it's what they want to have for the youth sports, youth sports don't need to pass nine thirty at night. It's pre-planned, so. There's a hidden agenda for something else happening here. I'm not sure what it is, but the way you've got this written up, you've got wide open. The gentleman with the wide paintbrush was very correct in that you're leaving open for a lot of interpretation when all this can happen. Again, I'm all about the sports and the kids. Thirteen years ago, when they got turned out, the boosters chose not to do it just because they couldn't get the lights and the amplification. None other, I think there was a hidden agenda there. You know, to halt the youth sports and having the kids play ball, build the fields. That's fine. That's great. I think we all like to hear the kids play and do that, but we don't need to do that past nine thirty at night. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Shirley. I live at seven thirty-five Lori Lane in the Township. And I wasn't really planning to speak, but based on what I'm hearing, I'm all for the boosters. My kids play the boosters. It's, our questions is not what the boosters plan. It's what we all plan. You guys are throwing stuff at us and making decisions without getting our input. And you can see a good share of these people are like, hey, we live here. This is what we, we depend on you to help us. Good that we're helping out for the boosters, but look out for us as well. Think about what does this bring? What does this entail? All of these changes that are made with two minutes you can ask, but nobody's answering questions. Nobody's giving us really an area where we can ask questions. We come here and say, let me see a plan, a design. We're not even getting that opportunity right now. So what I'm asking is, yeah, I'm in support of the ball field, but I'm not in support of us making decisions behind closed doors without getting the input from the people that live here. Thank you.
I'm Amanda for over. I live at six oh three White Lane Drive. I was not, I'm not speaking. So, I appreciate all the concerns that everyone's voicing. I am not in the backyard of the ball field, so I also appreciate that. I do feel that the boosters have done a great job of addressing the light and sound mitigation techniques that they are offering. I do see a challenge with the ordinance that some would like to have a specific level noted in that ordinance to make sure that any future improvements or enhancements are taken under those considerations for any additional fields that that one applies to. Think that's a great opportunity, but ultimately I think they're meeting that needs based off what I've read. Also, the amplified sound system, it looks like they're doing a great job of having a directionally-based sound system to help mitigate that noise overflow, which as the soccer fields, they do not use. They use portable systems, to the best of my knowledge, because I don't see anything hardwired, which means there's going to be a lot more overflow. So I do support the fact that the boosters are trying to do the best that they can do. I am definitely support of the fields themselves. If there was any room for improvement, would be setting specific levels of certification or specific systems for sound for future enhancements for the ordinance under consideration. I'd also say that this ordinance also meets the needs of the community's future plan for 2040. The comprehensive plan says to support seniors, youth, and all citizens. By removing youth, even though the boosters did not propose that by unchain from opening comments, was that was done by the town's attorney, to remove that, that fits the comprehensive plan without having to have multiple ordinances. And I believe that that suits our community needs so that all of us can benefit, including, let's say, the Challenger Leaks, or disabled wider into people. So I am in favor of that. Thank you.
Scott Johnson, nine oh three Work Road, and is softball commissioner and also on the board at Hudson Boosters. I am obviously in favor of this ordinance. We have definitely gone to the table and done our due diligence as a board to have state-of-the-art sound and light for this facility. We've been around for more than seventy years and there's no hidden intent. We are here for the kids, for the kids only. That is our number one goal. It always has been and it always will be. This is a hundred percent volunteer-run organization. I personally have coached for over ten years now and this is one of the greatest organizations in this town and has been for a long time. So we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Paul Mary, seven seven nine Crosby Drive. I live on the soccer field. The soccer field is a legacy sports field, you know, long-established here. I'm opposed to lights and I think this ordinance gives myself and our neighbors a fear that we're going to have extended play and traffic and activity well into the night because when the lights go off, they don't always go home. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that's from the resident that wants to speak? Because we got people that are non-residents standing there. We need some forward comments.
Lisa Anderson, seven eight three Elmo Circle. My backyard butts up to Highway twelve. The first thing I heard about this, I didn't get any survey. I didn't get anything in the mail. I found out through the next door and the chatter that was going on that way. And then the other neighborhood, the neighbors in my community were reaching out to me saying, hey, do you know this is going on? Yeah, we know. They own that property. That's not a secret. Again, I'm with everybody else saying the noise, the increase in Highway twelve traffic since we've been in our house for twenty-four years. When we moved out here, you could see the stars. It was quote-unquote quiet. Two eighth of luck, you're thinking you're living the good life. And you can't see the stars anymore. All you hear is the rumble of traffic between the freeway, ninety-four, and Highway twelve. I can't stand it anymore. And to listen to, I'm not against the kids' sports at all. I had kids in sports, you know, twenty years. However, what I am concerned about is the people not going home, the amplified sound system and the lighting, because it's going to be in my backyard and nobody has told us anything about it. Thank you.
My name is Judy Ryan. I live at seven seven nine Crosby Drive in Hudson. I live on the soccer field. We moved there in nineteen ninety-three. We were here when the soccer field went in. I remember the negotiations that we went through. It seems to me like it was a really good result for the neighborhood and the soccer field, in my point of view, because the kids have a beautiful facility with one of the fields and the neighborhood has quiet after dark with no lights and no amplification. I'm a little bit confused by what's going on here because it seems like I'm hearing it's either going to be a quick trip or it's going to be a beautiful baseball stadium. Now, is that really the only two choices that we have? Or isn't there room for any other negotiations or can't we have a beautiful baseball facility that doesn't have noise, you know, lights and amplification? I don't know why it's all or nothing and I'd like to see a little more discussion about how that area is developed. Thank you.
Charlie Webb, eight fifty-three Tibet Lane in Hudson. I've been the boosters in-house baseball director for the past forty years. And I understand everybody's complaints about the light pollution and the sound. My concern is for the children. As the summer progresses into July, we have a lot of baseball games that end up having to be canceled because there isn't enough light for the children to safely be able to play. The light becomes so, it becomes so dark that they could catch a line drive right off their forehead. And that's part of the reason why I am for having the lights, in addition to the football team, the tackle football portion of boosters. Those children need lights. By the time it gets to September, October, it's going to be so dark by five thirty that they're not going to be able to play without. And if everybody looks at the red rings on the big field, there are two football fields. So without the lighting, that's not going to be a possibility. And I would rather have a baseball field or football fields out there instead of a commercial zone. That's what I'd use, hopefully, though. So for that, I probably ask for you to approve. Thank you.
Hey, hi, I'm Hannah Smith, twelve fifty-seven Penn Street North. Yeah, so we, I've been here since twenty twenty, have my husband and we have an eighth grader who has participated in boosters and honestly, it's been the best experience. Being new in the community, meeting all his friends, that's really how we felt a part of the community was through boosters and baseball. And now we have four little boys that will, I'm sure, be in baseball and it's just so important for the future of the youth to have this complex. I'm a huge proponent of it. Traveling to other communities and seeing the complexes that they have and that we're not able to put on terms like these other communities are, it's really unfortunate. And I just, I think, I think about the joy that it brings to these children. And it's not spoiling them. It's truly healthy. It's the best thing for them to be outside with a team, making these memories, and being physically active. Also thinking about extra innings. You definitely need light. I mean, I can't imagine stopping a game when it's an extra innings because of a ton, you know, in ordinance. So, those are my thoughts. I need to leave. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Sam Kurtz, four four two Reserve Road in Troy, Township. I'll say a couple of things here tonight. I'm in full support of what the boosters have proposed. Any investment in youth initiatives within their boroughs, I think makes prices better. What I'm not hearing tonight and hearing from the constituents is that I don't think I can support the public process at this point. I think that's been gapping some ways. And I think there's middle ground, hearing from constituents, that maybe is in the boosters proposal that just wasn't connected to the public process. So I think there's middle ground, compromises that can be made to maybe keep us on track. But I don't think that's meant to go into your public process. So I urge you board to pause, reexamine your public process at this point, and really make sure that that's been sound so that people can be heard and the booster organization can really break forward. What is in the plan? What is specked so that residents can understand in detail and then have that come forward in ordinance, whether it's provision that's in ordinance that allows some of these things to be addressed, that can be done. Thank you.
Ryan Johnson, five six eight Calmery Road. Good evening and thank you for letting me speak. I was at the meeting January seventh. We all took the progression of this discussion to move to the next page and I thank you for that. I'm in support of the booster development of this facility. My name is Ryan Johnson. I bought and built Troy Township at twenty seventeen. Like many of the folks here tonight, I'm a parent, a coach, and a volunteer. My wife and I chose Hudson to raise our kids largely because of the resources that it could offer. I'm here tonight to ask you sincerely to consider the amendment to the current ordinance allowing this project and its details to be discussed again. At the January seventh meeting, I knew I was supporting and took pride in being active in the boosters, but tremendously agree. Not only did I see several of my friends and coaches also come to support the cause, but I saw a wonderful presentation clearly put together with extraordinary preparation and research delivered with true respect and professionalism. The project in waiting has been given proper diligence, planning, pursuit towards quality, forththought across, and certainly consideration to others. I wish many of those in opposition here tonight had been here to see it. The lights and sound were thoroughly addressed. There's absolutely no hidden agenda here. We're here for the kids. The booster board and the people here tonight are just like you, good people, regularly offering their time and efforts to serve where they are believed they are needed. We are all volunteers working for something we believe is right. We are, you are, the kind of people we're trying to raise our kids to be, those that give back. See, this entire thing's a loop. It might be too far to call it a circle of greatness, but it's certainly more than a circle of good. It's a circle where all of us, moms, dads, coaches, and volunteers give our time and effort and planning to push for something for our kids to enjoy and participate in. We all know that beyond just fun and competitiveness of the sport, athletics keeps children out of trouble, keeps them healthy, teaches them teamwork and self-sacrifice. Then they take those traits that we taught them, albeit on the baseball field, to grow up and be the kind of adults that contribute to society and give back to the community just the way all of our parents did for us, just whether we're here or not. So while we are trying to afford our youth nice facilities, I encourage you to see how much bigger this is than just a couple of ball fields. I exercise itself. For example, I probably want them to grow up. I acknowledge your positions on this board and respect the job that you do. Please recognize us here tonight in that same light and allow us to move forward along by considering the potential.
Has everybody that wants to speak, speak? Because that's your second.
I'm coming around for a second. No, I think that's okay.
That's why they asked that specifically. If you guys want to talk, then talk. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dawn Wilber. I'm at eight four six Ross Road. Doesn't run. It will literally be in our backyard as well as Hubbard Hills backyard. I am pro football fields, but after listening to a lot of the constituents, I do think there needs to be a discussion about listening to them. I want the ball fields, but I also don't want the lights ten, eleven o'clock at night. I love looking at the northern lights. I can see them from my backyard. But on the same token, I also don't want Amazon in my backyard. Quick trip. Quick trip. We'll go a quick trip. But we do want the ball field. At least my family does. We don't mind a ball field, but listen to the constituents and try to make a compromise to appease both the boosters and the people that live there. Try to make a compromise. Okay? We're all family. We can all get along. Thank you.
Luke Cherry, five friends, key three. I've lived in this community for my whole life, half of the town when I was younger and half my life now in the city. So we're half these years have been a baseball player, coach, volunteer, and now as a treasurer and board member of the Hudson boosters. The boosters and their offerings have helped shape New York today. Much of the opposition sign has been about noise and light pollution. The reality is this strip of land will not be torn fields in twenty years. The alternative to a football field will be on course. One previous speaker asked for an impact study of this complex. Another speaker asked for a tenant for me. I'd like to offer an impact study of youth sports from people much smarter than me from the National Library of Medicine. According to the National Library of Medicine, the benefits of youth sports are many. I would ask tonight if any other prospective tenant on Highway twelve could offer the following to the youth of our community. Increased physical activity, enhanced fitness, lifelong physical, emotional, and health benefits, decreased risk of obesity, minimizing the development of chronic disease, improvement of health, improvement of motor skills, decrease of depression, decrease in suicidal thoughts, decrease high-risk health behaviors, increased positive behaviors in teens, development of fundamental motor skills, improvement in their self-concept and self-worth, enhancing their social skills, providing life lessons, improvement in positive social behaviors, enhancement of time management skills, improvement of academic achievement, health and develop passion in bull setting, and improvement of character. Thank you for your time.
Greg Berg, Lake Elmo, Minnesota. So, got a heartbreak in there.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Greg Berg, B E R G. The reason I'm The reason I'm here is I'm a twenty-five-year Booster member. Moved over back to the cities to take care of my dying mother. Uh, past baseball softball commissioner, uh, uh, past football board member and first softball commissioner here. I want to thank you people here because when I was a softball, baseball commissioner, we got to these nice field spaces out here. I want to thank you guys for that. Also, we got the nice concession stand built and also we started the process of getting that third field built down here. So you guys have always been good to the Boosters and I really want to thank you for that. I coached a hundred and fifty-five teams now since nineteen seventy. And youth sports is so, so important. Kids will find a way, uh, an activity to, uh, fill their time if not for youth sports. And I just can't say enough for the Boosters. I want to thank the Boosters, uh, for supplying that need because some previous, he said there is a rec department here, so the Boosters fill that void nicely. Uh, Boosters have no hidden agenda. Uh, maybe they, we need to, as a Booster Board, uh, uh, get more people involved from the community, but I, I, I don't know if I'm not that involved with it anymore. But I want to thank everybody for, for this need and, uh, cool weight goods.
Michelle Anderson, six oh eight Range Road. Um, I really had no intention of speaking, but I made speaking, but I received a letter in our mailbox. It was the first time I became aware of any of this. And I think there was not enough effort to make us residents aware of what would be planned and written in our backyard. You know, what you're offering us is this rather vague, uh, set of, of revisions. And right now, we already have a lovely facility here. I love our kids. I mean, I support them doing sports. Everybody here that comes and proposes acts like we don't support our kids and we do. I oppose the noise, I oppose the lights, and I don't seem to dismiss that, but it's a really big deal. It, it affects our, our quality of life. It's obnoxious. And, um, we seem to give us a choice between a quick group and a field. And that seems like a, a very superficial choice. So, um, I am one hundred percent opposed to this. And I ask that you give residents the opportunity, who are really in the neighboring areas, to voice their opinion and not all the, the Booster head or people that we know already are going to be bored.
Matt Stewart, two two three one, Red River.
What's your answer? Sorry.
Two two three one, Red River. Uh, so I graduated Hudson in twenty eighteen. I was lucky enough to grow up in Hudson. My entire youth athletic experience is due to the Boosters and everyone sitting here. Um, I think of my time at Hudson and because of the Boosters, it is, uh, experience second to none. That I go off to college, it's just different what the Boosters provides to the kids that everyone here has talked about today. Um, I now work in Hudson and looking toward the future, ideally grow up a year in Hudson. Um, and I want to be able to provide an experience, uh, youth athletic experience like I was provided. And with that comes change. This, the town of Hudson is going to change eventually. And I think you guys up here have the opportunity to invest in future kids and make sure that it is for youth athletics and not just a warehouse district and we look like wood. So I'm obviously in, I want this to happen. So, thank you.
Uh, Dave O'Brien, seven sixty-two Martin Avenue, resident of the town of Hudson. I'm also president of Hudson Boosters. Uh, as most people know, the, the, the Boosters functions as a park and recs for baseball, softball, football, and children, they do, and they do very much. And send those, uh, parks and playgrounds continually use a lack of youth athletic facilities. You've heard that from several, several times. So a little over two years ago, in response to that, uh, we took a data-driven approach to determine the best way to develop property we can be on our own. All right, it'd be three things. First of all, we did outside business, uh, for other local communities and citizens. Secondly, we, we picked up and garnished the best business plans, the best business practices for smaller sized facilities. Uh, and the third thing we did was do some technical research on some conventional technology. Okay, so, uh, inked up, which included, uh, dark skies. So a little more than a month ago, dark skies was never even mentioned in here. And now it's our little category. All right? So that's the level of commitment and new diligence that, that we're working on. Uh, also in, in respect, we need to make sure that if we develop this facility, it's available to all of our athletes that we support, not just select group, but everybody. Okay? And it also has to be affordable to everybody because we don't take public money to operate. We have to make this work on the registration fees that they charge as young athletes and families. So we requested three things at the end of the day. We requested, uh, steady lighting, amplified sound, and hours other than daylight operations. All right? Those are the three things we requested. And then, uh, through the board process, I came up with revisions. I will let you know that the, uh, the problem with youth, with the lack of youth athletic complexes in this community has been a problem in the past, it's a problem today, and it will be a problem in the future in all circumstances. So I would urge the board to act sooner than later because problems are going to get worse. Thank you very much.
I'm David Jimenez, six oh eight Range Road. Look, if we were arguing about whether to build a ball field or not, it sounds like that's what we're arguing, but we're not. We got a ball field with three diamonds and adding, how many extra hours a night are we talking about? That, that's what we're talking about. I don't care that, that kids are going to play volleyball, he's great, and not knocking on the boosters. It's what happens after dark I care about. And I'm going to tell you, I know from experience because I ran the Hudson Soccer Association Facility for five years, a number of years back. The place was a mess. Every night, the first summer, I went out there and patrolled and broke up the beer parties that were going on there in Houston. They gave me twenty-five thousand dollars for the fence. So I'm asking, if this goes through and it sounds like you've kind of decided on it, for the love of God, put a gate on these things at night so when we shut down, we can have our peace and quiet back. I'm still not sure if we're talking ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, or midnight. But I'm not against all the good things people say that exercises for kids, all true. But none of it is untrue if we don't extend our neighborhood privacy until midnight. None of it's untrue if we don't do this. All those good things you said are true. None of it's untrue if we don't pass this.
One minute, he's got that.
Thank you.
No, is this all one minute? Do you need to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, so everyone here should be two minutes until you say differently.
That's two minutes, yeah. The rest of you, you're all spoke.
He's two, then the other ones will be one.
You mean when you spoke?
They both spoke, that's why.
I just want to make sure we're in that, or, all right, go ahead.
John, who's a, we named before, has a history as one of Hudson residents, uh, Booster member or a softball commissioner. Um, I can't say anything better than, like, Booster College, I already said. I just want to make a couple of points to clarify. Number one, I, I've been here for the last two meetings. Dave and the Boosters have done an excellent, excellent, excellent job at making the presentation and on all the work that they've put into it. I'm sure you'll be willing to give it again for the umpteenth time, which we had to alleviate some of everybody's concerns. But the project really is phenomenal as far as the light goes. I understand everybody's concern, but the amount of work that's gone into it and the plan is just absolutely tremendous. Number two, as a former commissioner, I can tell you that the lights are really only used, at least for baseball and softball, during the school year is the majority of the time because you can't start a five o'clock game in April and May in guarantee that it's going to be done. Teams are coming to play from other communities. We usually start at six o'clock. The game's almost always done by eight o'clock, but it gets started about seven fifteen. So this is a, all the kids have to be home for school, like I say, annually in April and May. It's very, once, once we get to June, July, and August, it's light until nine o'clock. I think it's completely reasonable to put a time limit at ten o'clock or whatever it may be on fields. That's pretty standard across the nation. Uh, you know, we can, we can debate extending that, but I think it's a fair compromise. But really, this has to do with the school year. We can't, we can't start baseball after school at first six o'clock game and expect it to be done in, in April, May, or September, October. Finally, I mean, the season is just six months to begin with. So this is not like it's an all-year thing. If we were to divide by eight today, it would be dark, just as it is for the majority of the year. It's a very limited time period. Finally, as a former Hudson resident, we have by far the longest drive to get to North Hudson. So our youngest kid's playing baseball and softball. We're driving all the way to North Hudson. It's a twenty-minute drive. I mean, I love the town of Hudson, but I actually wish the ball field was closer. Thank you.
Trevor Webb, do I have to say?
No, hang on, Trevor.
Perfect. All right, I'm going to keep it short. Uh, so I don't know about everybody yet, uh, in the audience, but I know that electricity is not cheap. It's very expensive. And Mr. Dave over here makes us operate on a very tight budget. So we have no intention of keeping the lights on longer than we actually need to. Which is also part of the reason why under subsection three A, it says the lighting shall be set to automatically shut off when there is no scheduled play and shall be turned off no more than one hour after the end of the game plan. So our game play is scheduled for baseball between the hours of five thirty and eight thirty. Most of our games are played between six and eight. And so for anybody that's, that's concerned that we're going to have baseball being played in the eight, nine, ten o'clock, midnight, it's not going to be happening. Because I don't know about anybody else as a parent, I have no intention of keeping my kids between the ages of five and eight out at a baseball field that late. So, thank you very much.
One's absolutely, this is four one's trail, Hudson here. Um, a couple of things came to mind in the last days before we spoke about this is six months. It's the six months that everybody wants to be in here. It's, we have to leave when we take office to, to take care of the constituents and people that are here already, that are living in the properties that they bought. And we have to look at what is coming up now. I had one guy tell me, oh, I live next to the gun, gun range. I have to listen to that. We bought next to it. The people here didn't buy next to a ball field. They're asking to bring a ball field in here and they're asking to bring lights. The, the people before us came in and said, we don't want lights. There's a reason for that. We have a rural community. We just went through our long-range plan. I was part of it. Part of that is to keep that rural aspect. And part of that is the people that are here that have already purchased their homes, that have lived here, paid taxes, voted, you all, that say, we don't want it. No lights, no sound.
I'm Brad, seven one seven Badlands Road. I'm a lifelong resident of the town of Hudson, as you probably know. And we, uh, our family owns Badlands so far. And we have had lights for fifty years that the township approved through special exception or whatever, however they did it back in them days. And as far as we know, the lights have not been any major problem. And as somebody that is in the business of entertaining kids, man, these kids are dying to get outside, be outside. It's, it's the end I go to this thing, man. They gotta have something to do. Thank you.
David Anderson, seven eight three Alford Circle, Tom Hudson. Uh, Mr. Foster, I've got a question for you. Did you read the ordinance change where a bunch of big box holders, resident? Is that part of this change?
No.
That is just?
That's part of the, the town of Hudson plan.
I think we don't do this. Okay. Um, other thing I have a question about is, my dad was an architect. I've been in meetings with him. There's always been some kind of a model or fake poster that shows a drawing of it. Where do we find any information of what this will actually look like? And a lot of people look at it as a mystery, like eighty-foot tall thing. It's a bar tower laid down, it's like a tour. It's big towers, sixty feet above everyone's houses, so what does it actually look like? Does anybody got any kind of drawings or anything for people to have actual information on? See what it would be? There's a lot of speculation. I mean, yeah, five o'clock, you like football? Do they need to be eighty foot tall? There's some different that can be done there. I mean, just the answer that I have.
Hi, my name is Sarah Baxter and I'm at sixteen ten Laurel Avenue. And I am a retired baseball mom, Booster mom. Um, I was given the opportunity in, uh, two thousand and ten to attend Boosters. I'll bring my kids up on the assistance program. Uh, I have had the opportunity to, uh, coach, rep, baseball. And I have also sat on the Booster Board and most recently, um, helped with some of their social media. Um, and I have also been in part of, kind of in the background, but just watching the planning of this go on. So it's really exciting to see you forward. Um, I have a lizard, Minnesota lizard player, um, because the opportunity here is just going further down. Um, the field availability, the field, um, quality is just not there. We travel all over the country for baseball and it's embarrassing. Hudson's fields and availability is embarrassing.
She gives two minutes. This was her first time.
I told her that, so I apologize. Go ahead and, um, tell us a few, just a couple of seconds to the Booster.
Um, my kids are no longer in Boosters. Um, but when I was financially struggling and I couldn't put my kids through baseball, these guys made it happen. These guys didn't charge us an admission fee and not pay slips. And so now I have legendary baseball players that will, um, that will travel me further in baseball. And I owe it to Boosters and so, um, I don't have the time for this, but I'll always make the time for this because it's so important to give these kids the availability, the tournaments, and to bring people to our town. We travel all over now and the money we spend everywhere else is just astronomical. We deserve that. Hudson deserves that. Thank you.
Tim Bell, this is Judith or one?
Here's Joe Burden.
Yes, you're first, because I just need to know if I can cut you off like I did her.
Jay Collins, seven twenty-four Greenbrier, I rent there. Um, I, I just felt obligated to speak because, um, we're getting some questions about, you know, is there architectural rendering? Is there any, anywhere where we can see this? And I know the board can't respond, um, but the Boosters have done a fantastic job. Uh, and it was presented in meetings. And so, you know, if you haven't been coming to meetings, I'm sure there's a way for the Boosters to communicate what they've already communicated to the community. Uh, they presented a fantastic, uh, rendering. Uh, they, they showed a fantastic light study, uh, sound study. They presented all of this in this room with no hidden agenda. Uh, and so if we have questions about what this looks like, there's got to be a place where we can just send that to you or you can come see it because it was presented at an open forum here and it's fantastic. Uh, the other thing is to keep asking what's changed in the last thirteen years. There ha, there are a couple of things. We've fallen further behind, uh, compared to other communities in our facilities. And the technology has changed quite a bit. Uh, and the Boosters were, were able to show this. Lighting has changed, sound quality has changed. Um, and so I understand a lot of the concerns for the people living around the facility. I would have the same concerns, but I would urge them to see the difference between what lights looked like thirteen years ago, what the lights would look like today. At least that's so they can have a clear understanding of what we're talking about. Because it's completely different than what was presented thirteen years ago.
One minute. I think, I think the frustration with the folks that live here is that it feels like the town just doesn't deserve anyone to notify us what's going on. And I think that's obvious from what everybody here has said. I didn't know about it. And maybe that's part, part of our fault, but I will tell you, I've been at every one of these meetings. I watched the presentation live. It was a one-on-one presentation. Uh, wish there was more people there. But I think just because state law says you can, you can do the bare minimum, we shouldn't do the bare minimum. This is an important issue that will affect our community for generations. And I'm begging you to go slow and begging you to take, you know, help. Maybe it's a public discussion. Maybe we do this three or four more times. Because honestly, we'd like to be able to interact with us and I feel like that is what's missing. And so, you know, this is an important thing. I'm not against the Boosters. But I do have a question for the Boosters. If it was a matter of just one zoning versus this broad, would you be a favorer? Why don't you give your things?
I'm not qualified to understand the difference between spots located.
Michelle, this is six oh eight Range Road. I fear Dave mentioned that really the lights will only stay on one hour after dark. Everything will be unobstructed. You promised, trust us, it's for the kids only. I guarantee ten years from now that these vague policies will be meaningless. People from other areas are going to be loving their lives. The residents, neighborhood in this area that pay taxes and vote for these board members, our quality of life will be irrevocably changed.
Trudy, 783 Larson Lane. I have one last question. I know there's going to be a working session for everybody on March 3rd. And I'm wondering how the township residents can find out what the verbiage is that the township agrees on and if we're able to see this before you vote or if there's going to be another hearing. And also, I just wanted to state that I used to write policies, practices, and procedures for corporations, and I'm wondering what the procedure is for letting the township residents know what's happening here, what you decide on, what the process is for communication. Thank you.
Seagrove 783. I'd like to remind the board, yeah, the boosters, 13 years ago, we gave the special exception. They granted them to use the fields with restrictions. They could have, 13 years ago, from then on, they could have put fields in there. They're short fields. They should have put them in. Now we're at this point, and a part that I'd like to remind the group here that say that, well, we don't want them. Quick trip, my God, that's terrible. Do you realize that if a louse must have come in there, they would pay the town, their taxes on the town would be right around $80,000 a year? What does the boosters, they going to be willing to kick in $80,000 a year for that body? I doubt it. But that's my comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to talk?
Hi, I'm James Dutton, 811 Charlie Road. First time I've ever talked to one of these, but I sat through for this. I'm an 18-year resident of Hudson. And disclosure, I'm on board of Hudson's office position. Five kids have gone to new sports, and I can only emphasize what the boosters have said, that quality of life improvement for new sports cannot be underestimated. The things that they do, they're not in sports, you know. If they're in sports, it's better. But the boosters have done a fantastic job. I do not see a hidden agenda. The ordinance is written now, is outdated, inappropriate, and the new changes you have are fantastic, and I urge you to follow them and approve these new things so we can do new things in Hudson that we really need. The quality of recreational facilities in Hudson are very poor. We need more fields. We need more opportunity for kids. The technology has changed. The lights are noise, it's not going to be a problem. And yes, a quick trip or an Amazon thing is going to be much worse than kids playing baseball for the baseball season. So I can only urge you as, you know, taxpayer and voter to follow what you're trying to do and move forward with the improvements in the ordinance that you have. Thank you.
I'm Matt.
All right, so you answer a minute.
I won't need to, Vinny Cagnetta.
I'm sorry?
Vinny Cagnetta, 344 School Lane. So I'm here as a parent. I have, I have subbed in booster program currently. I'm also the assistant varsity baseball coach at Hudson High School. And I have a Hudson High School baseball program. We'd like to show our support for the Hudson Booster Athletic Support Complex and the ordinance updates that are needed. Head coach Brett Leggett, Andy Edelman, and myself began coaching at the Hudson varsity program in 2020-2021 was our first season due to COVID. In our tenure, we're having to report that we have three conference championships out of the last four years, and it's a sexualist, three times. And last year was our first day tournament appearance in the last five years. We have a lot to be proud of, and we also have equal excitement for the season this coming season and for years to come. We want to give credit in this success to our athletes and the players that are coming into the program. These are really great kids, and they have a national word of sport. For the most part, or for most, if not all, their baseball, their love for baseball started when the Hudson Booster Program. These people are very important to our efforts. A successful program is built on principles of access and opportunity. The Hudson Booster Athletic Complex will support these principles for continued access and opportunity to future development. And that's all we're asking today is, give the Hudson Boosters access and opportunity to let them do what they can do. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Wendy Gilt, 763 Alton Road, Hudson. You know, I hear this talk about big box stores and things like that being put in. Isn't that why the Hudson School District sold their property on UU because they needed sewer and water to accommodate them there? How would you have big box stores that appear on Highway 12 without sewer and water in the area accommodating that? And then also, it's just, you know, everybody makes it sound like we're totally against new sports and everything. That's not the case. All of our kids were, most of our kids were in new sports here in Hudson. But it's just the process of, these are like all or nothing changes for our, you know, revisions with this, you know, with the ordinance. You know, it's, it leaves open a lot of area for different things to be put in all over the place, not just different baseball fields that we talk about.
Can I have a letter that I can, if you want to talk?
Yeah. Second. My floor. I live right behind where this is. I agree, the boosters really put in a good amount. And when I think of things that could be built there, I think they've done their best to make these ball fields as good as they could be for the people living around them. I guess no one understands the impact that's had. But I think it would be nice to have a chance just to have some of these questions answered. Like, that was at the last meeting when they presented. I wish I could have asked about traffic and parking and the other things that have been brought up multiple different times. I feel like we haven't had that opportunity as residents and the people who have come to these meetings, tried to stay out on it. I tried to make it to the other meetings, but every single one of those times I was out of work or grabbing food and delivering the night, so I wasn't able to make those. So I think it would be helpful to do that. And I think Hudson, they talk about wanting to be good neighbors, and I think that's very good. And I think doing some of these things and having that ability to talk with who might be a potential neighbor would be really useful and might make this a lot more of a kind of compromising agreement versus kind of the way it's gone. I think that might just make everybody a bit more comfortable with us and just, thank you. Thank you.
I have a letter that was sent to the town. Dear Town of Hudson and Town of Hudson neighbors, this letter...
Name of address?
Name of address is Tim Peckman at 812 Jermaine Lane. This letter is written in response to some of the misinformation that has been circulating in the community regarding the Hudson Township and the ordinance modification requested by Hudson Boosters. I have worked for St. Croix County for over 25 years and lived in the Town of Hudson for at least the past 18. I am one of the closest neighbors to the proposed complex and some, one most likely to be impacted by the lighting and sound. I have been an active Hudson Booster member in the past and attended Hudson Plan Commission meeting on the proposal. Have discussed the project with a variety of people, including those vehemently opposed to it. I am assuming you, you that there is plenty of residents who support the proposal, but who would prefer to remain anonymous in the crazy times that we live in. Contrary to the suggestion made by some, it is foolhardily to suggest that the Hudson Boosters intended allow activities to go from 6:30 a.m. until 10:30 at night, 5:00 to 7:00 a.m. each week during whatever season they wish to hold events. If there were a case, I too would certainly be opposed to any ordinance modification. Hudson Boosters is a well-respected ordinance agency that has the best interest of the community of our, that the proposed change to the ordinance is in harmony with the 2040 comprehensive plan and the complex would be something the township and its residents could be proud of. It would be a welcome beacon for the activity that would help the town maintenance, its stature in St. Croix County to Hudson Boosters as stewards of the property and a win-win situation for everybody. As no one should doubt, there is a commitment to the community and the understanding of the dedicated nature that the Hudson Town Board has attempted to strike with this project. I would much rather have a good neighbor like the Hudson Boosters in my backyard as opposed to an anonymity that may or may not have some of the same concerns at heart. St. Croix County continues to be the fastest-growing area within the state of Wisconsin, whether we like it or not. Change is coming to Highway 12, Badlands Road, if it is not already there. Recreational facilities will be needed even more in the future, and creating opportunities for children and families in the township should be something admired and not condemned. Should the Hudson Town Board decide to have positive action on the ordinance and the Hudson Boosters project fail, we can only hope that someone buys the property who will have similar interest in buying. I would rather not take the chance, but with my faith and knowledge in the community of the Hudson Boosters and trust that they will continue to be the good neighbor they have been in our community for the last 75 years. That's the end of the letter. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Remember, I'm going to ask two times. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I would entertain a motion from the board to close the public hearing.
So?
Motion by Rachel is our second.
I'll second.
Second by Susan, all in favor, see if you can buy a saying, aye. Aye, all in favor, aye. We will now move into the town board meeting portion of this. And in that town board meeting, we have a discussion of major changes in the ordinance. We go back to, if we do, it will have to go back to the planning commission. The one thing I want to point out is I led through the planning through the town plan. The 2040 vision of our 2023 comprehensive plan, which we just recently completed, says we are to maintain and enhance the Town of Hudson's cherished rural character while thoroughly preparing for the future. In our future land use maps, this area is zoned and changed for development should be consistent with the future land use category shown on the map and corresponding text. That map shows the area along Highway 12 will be a corridor for commercial development. That's the future. Community facility goals. In our comp plan, it says, coordinated with private organizations that are serving the recreational needs of our families, especially those that focus on the needs of seniors, youth, and low-income families. And the last point I want to make is the ability to provide services. Petitioners may also demonstrate how they will assist the town in the many shortcomings in the public service of our facilities. And that's what this is about. And just, I don't want to go into a lot, so it has to go back to the planning commission if we make major changes. I'd like to start down there. Dan, what's your thoughts?
I think it should be referred to the board's working session on Monday.
Okay. Susan?
Again, we agreed.
You have to push and pull, touch our team.
We agreed in our January meeting as a board that we would have working sessions, which this board, I myself have a board number, has not had that opportunity. So I would like the opportunity to have our working sessions after we have listened to our community and if that takes another step after, it will, but that's where I would like to go from now.
Okay.
I think we have an overwhelming majority of support for this. We are. It is great. It is great. I got like 20, I got like 20 against, 20 for. That's on the phone, 8, 800 people. So if you guys want to go sit on Monday and talk about what we've talked about over and over, I'm fine with that. But I'm in support of...
Rachel?
I do support the booster field project. With what they showed us, if everybody could have been here and seen the presentation, the lighting is not the same. It does not affect the neighborhoods in the same way as it did 13 years ago. Neither does the sound system. My concern is for more populated areas like the soccer field. So we can't just blanket this. And I, when we talked about it in January, I think we were all for the project, but we did definitely say we needed working sessions to, I don't know why, we need to speak through this. We need working sessions to find to the limits and make sure that it is best for... Yes.
Okay. I'll have to add a motion, but I want to say something before we go any further. The working session, there is no involvement of public discussion during that working session. It's just a town board, just so that, because I know there was some misinformation about that out there where they talked about, we want to be a part of the working sessions, and you're not. Anything that comes out of the working session, if it, there's not any major changes, it has to go to the county board for approval. Town board would have to approve it, then go to the county. If there's major changes, the process has to go back to the planning commission to be able to go through the same process again to input. And the reason for a lot of the confusion about why things like the youth was taken out was some of the attorney decisions was, those things are conflict of interest with, when you need things for both the seniors, the youth, and the families in need and not just youth. And that, the one that said, you gotta have no, you gotta have no neighbors that are opposed to it, the attorney said that's the first thing that came out because you cannot have any way of determining whether you have an exact, you have no way of proving what you have or haven't gotten there. And as a consequence, that's why it was written with the way it was the first time. It maybe should have been written a little tighter than what it was, meaning that it was, it was a little bit too loose in the beginning. It really was. It's, or tied down so much that you couldn't have anything else. I agree with what everybody has said. Their proposal was phenomenal. And I think the big thing that everybody needs to understand is the technology has changed. When I saw that from what happened in the 1970s till now, even look at the lights in this roundabout, they're not as light as some of the ones you go down to the interstate. And it's because of the technology that's been changing. This ordinance is written with dark sky in mind, which means when you walk away from the field, you're going to be careful that you don't stumble because you're not going to see where you're going because there is no spillover of lighting. The sound leaves, doesn't leave the field. That's all changed. And that's why I think, that's why...
The sound doesn't leave the field. Come on.
That's locked. Well, I'm sorry.
Listen to yourself.
You don't live by the factory.
Listen to yourself.
Because that's what you got with what the soccer fields are. That's not what the boosters are proposing.
Someone try to...
Yeah, the so...
Someone try to light more of the Hudson board.
It's cars and people, it's all kinds of stuff.
That's enough.
Garbage.
That's enough. Do I have a motion to go into a working session now?
Yes. Yeah, I make a motion.
Well, I gotta, I gotta make a decision here. Okay.
So you already have a motion. You already have, so I'm sure you have the skin, so if you're not changing that, you're correct.
All right. I read this differently. I move your turn. Okay. So second? Second. Motion by Tim, second by Susan, all in favor, see if you can buy a saying, aye. Aye, all in favor, aye. Thank you, everyone.